Good morning, everybody. The time is 7:30 a.m. Welcome to this regularly scheduled city council meeting of the City of Vader. The date is Friday, July 24th. Roll call.
Donna Rogers.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mayor Shai.
Here. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Parsons. Do the honors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. A reminder that the public hearing on the moratorium for A Street will be at the next city council meeting on August 14th. The planning committee did have a meeting on July 15th. They discussed the updated building fee schedules, development regulations, and the community action plan. Also, they did have a special meeting last night. There was a variance request this week for a building setback on Alpine Court, and I am to remind all of the elected officials that we should not discuss this issue with anyone as perceived bias could come into play later on in the process. The way it'll work is that the planning committee will have a public hearing first. They'll hear public input from all the folks that are in the area. They'll all be notified, and then they'll have a recommendation for council, and then it will come to council for council's final decision. And the park board did meet on July 22nd, and they discussed grant updates, online trainings, and warden pavilion repair. All right. Council reports. You have any council reports? Right, hearing none. Agenda approval. I do have one item. It was requested that we add item number five to the agenda, council to consider changing the regularly city, regular city council meeting time.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minute or agenda with the added city business of numbered five, and the rest is written.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with item five, meeting change time. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Donna, I don't think I heard your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm not opposed.
All right.
Oh, I say yes. I said aye.
Okay, very good. Motion carries. It was unanimous. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for 7:10, 2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the minutes from July 10th. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Just a quick question for those that are online. Could you hear Jason down in the end?
I can hear Jason just fine.
Yep, I can hear him.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Voucher approval. We have a motion for the vouchers.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for July 2020, and the beginning $21,638.37, the end of July $12,543.43, for a total of $34,181.80.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a special report. Jason Rayfield with the Vader Caretakers would like to address the council. So Jason, I see that you're online. You have the mic.
Yes, sir. So I was told that there was, you know, some, some issues with us having this program, as I call it. And I guess there was told that we were shining flashlights in people's windows, and that was the major thing. Well, I keep a list and a schedule of who's out patrolling at what times, what days. So therefore, if something like this happens, I have verifiable proof that it wasn't us, or if it, if it was, they weren't scheduled to actually, you know, they never told us. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, put us out there to help the community, to just keep an eye on the community. I mean, we're not shining flashlights down people's houses or their properties. That's their property. To me, that's trespassing. Even, even though it's a light, that is trespassing, because that's their problem. We focus on the roads, or if we hear noises. And we're not quiet, because we want people to know we are coming, for one, so maybe somebody will scurry off of whatever they're doing, if they're doing something, you know, shady or illegal. We're not trying to sneak up on somebody and trying to attack them. No, that, that's not what we're here, that's not what we're about. If, if we have a question, we will ask somebody. No, we're not going to ask for their ID. We are not police officers. We're not even security guards. We are a community, like, we're pretty much a community watch program, but we patrol. That's why I call it the caretakers. We take care of Vader. I make sure that we go out in pairs, therefore, two reasons. One, in case something does happen, you always have somebody with you for a witness. Two, most of the time, if there's more than one person, there's less likely a reason for an altercation. Somebody, if they start getting, where they think they should, you know, attack two people versus one, it usually stops and deters it. Also, for safety factors, if something happens, somebody's there to help. I mean, even if it's falling down, breaking an ankle, somebody's there to help. Our, our plan is not to physically do anything. We are just keeping us out there, because just knowing that somebody's out there is going to keep people from wanting to do things, because they're like, well, at any time, these people could be walking around. We do not have a scheduled walk-around. It's when people can help. Also, reason that is, so nobody gets, we don't have a routine that somebody can catch onto. This is, this is for our community, and that's all this is. It's just to help everyone, not just the few people. So I, I don't know where the problem lies.
Well, this is a great time for the council and any of the public that are here to ask questions. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Rayfield? We have a question. Jason, Judy Costello is here, and she'd like to talk to you.
Yeah, okay.
Jason, it's Judy. I have no problem with you doing this. I think neighborhood watch is a great thing.
Jason, can you hear her?
A little bit. A little bit.
Right here. This is better right here.
Jason, it's Judy Costello. I have no problem.
Oh, hi.
Hi. I have no problem with you doing the neighborhood watch. I would just like to know, are you prepared if I call in the sheriff, because I don't know it's you?
Oh, no, that's fine. I mean, if, if you feel you need to call in the sheriff, please do so. Don't second-guess somebody. I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. If, if a sheriff comes out, I understand that. We are in direct contact with the sheriffs. I should have said this. We are in direct contact with the sheriff's office. And if they have questions about, you know, somebody walking around, they actually have called me numerous times and asked me, do you have somebody patrolling right now on such and such street? I say no. I say yes. Depends on, you know, where it's at. So it isn't like we're wasting the police officer's time. That's why I've been in contact with officers, so something like that doesn't happen. We're not wasting a police officer's time away from a potential call that really needs attention. So, I mean, I've, I've done everything in my power to make this beneficial for everybody.
Thank you.
So I, I, yeah, no problem.
Anybody else?
I, I have a question. Do you, does the sheriff have a list of your group, so that they kind of know who should be out there and shouldn't be?
Um, they, they haven't got one, but I can give them one if that makes you feel better. They, they haven't asked for one. They usually contact me and ask me, you know, at times, because we, we sometimes have the, um, well, recently, we haven't got it. That's fine. But when we first started, we had officers giving us their times are going to be in town, what times are not, so therefore, we can patrol when the officers aren't. It's kind of a, you know, I watch, I watch a town, you watch a town, I watch a town, you watch a town, kind of thing. But if it makes the community feel better, I, I will be happy to give the information to the officers if my caretakers are, are wanting to do that. But I'll tell you, if they are not wanting to do that, then they will not be on our caretakers. So, if that makes...
Yeah, I, I just wondered, because a couple of people made the comments about, but, you know, if they're up at that time of night, whenever you guys are out there, and they don't know, the, the community doesn't know who's supposed to be patrolling. That was the question, that they didn't know who was supposed to be out there and who wasn't, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be happy to give a list of who is on the caretakers, and I will, I will drop it off at City Hall, and I can leave it, you know, so therefore, everybody can get a list, if that's the case. So people will know.
I think that would be good, because, you know, we don't know whether you're one of the bad guys or good guys, because I, I've seen you before, but I don't know anybody else. I wouldn't know if I do, but just, I don't know. Yeah.
No, I understand. I understand completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem.
And thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
Yes, yes. Yep. I, I'm just here to, I'm trying to make our community safe like it was when I was a child, and, you know, I've noticed the drugs have gotten bad. I've, I've, luckily, I've got reports that, you know, since we started this, a couple of the drug houses, I'm not saying which ones, have actually stopped doing their deals, at least in town. So that's a, that's a plus.
That's a good thing.
Yes. I'm just trying to make it better for my children and everybody else's childrens to follow.
Anybody else? Questions for Mr. Rayfield? All right. Jason, thank you very much for coming and presenting to the council. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. Yep, not a problem. And if you guys have any questions, if I'm not around, I'm pretty sure most people know where I live. I live on the end of Main Street there, by the tracks. Also, if you know Damien Dazo, he also, he's a good person to ask questions for, because he's a co-president of it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, not a problem. You guys have a good day. I got to get back on the road.
All right. You too.
Yep. Bye-bye.
All right. Item one on city business. City proclamation. We've been asked to proclaim September as the Child Cancer Awareness Month, and so I'd like to read this proclamation. Hopefully, the council approves. Whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 80% of childhood cancer cases are diagnosed only after the disease has metastasized and spread to other parts of the body, and whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have long-lasting chronic conditions as a result of the treatment they go through, and whereas there has been a 24% increase in pediatric cancer cases over the last 40 years, equal to 43 children per day, or 15,780 children a year, diagnosed with cancer in the United States. Whereas the National Cancer Institute recognized the unique research needs of childhood cancer and increased funding to conduct this research, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently to dedicate their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure for all childhood cancers. Now therefore, I, Joe Shai, Mayor of the City of Vader, do hereby declare September 2020 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Vader, and I encourage all people in our city to join me in this special observance. Approve this 24th day of July 2020 in a regularly scheduled city council meeting. The organizers of this have requested all the mayors in the state to do this, and they're going to use all the proclamations as one large unified stance. So, that's very good. Thank you. Do you have any discussion on this topic or thoughts?
Do we have to make a motion for it?
Yes.
Oh, we do. I make a motion that we approve the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the proclamation, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Seconded by, seconded by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll make sure the organizers have this, and we can hopefully make a difference. All right. Item two on the council city business. Council to consider Resolution 162020 Civil West Contract Amendment. This will allow Civil West to assist us in our, perky for on the, Diane, the shoreline...
Management Plan.
The shoreline management plan. Once again, this is still covered under the same funding packages that we had before.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 162020, the Civil West Contract Amendment.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Resolution 162020, the Civil West Contract Amendment. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, council to consider Ordinance 2020-07, the City of Vader Employee Policies. As you know, we've been working on this for a few months. We've sent it to you several times for your review, and this is the final document with those changes in it. Our employee policy is set by ordinance, so we would need to approve the ordinance. I can say that I've also, our city employees have also reviewed this, and they all are in favor of it.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2020-07, the City of Vader Employee Policy.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve Ordinance 2020-07, City of Vader Employee Policies. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Just to note that it's actually personnel policies.
Vader Personnel Policies, instead of Employee Policies.
I'll second it.
My, that was my typo. It's close. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Ordinance 2020-07, the City of Vader Personnel Policies, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number four, council to discuss purchase of cellphone and laptop computer for city use. Donna, what did you want to talk about?
Well, I wanted to talk about using the city's equipment for these meetings and things, and then it isn't on anyone's personal computer, which, you know, none of us have access to the public information on your private computers. They're open to public records requests, being you're using them for the Scott's computer and yours also. So I don't think it would be that expensive to purchase a laptop computer that the city uses for these things, nor a cellphone for the mayor to use if you need to call the attorney.
Yeah, I'm not...
Otherwise, your personal things are open to public records requests, and then being their own private things, no offense to anyone, but that doesn't mean if someone requested those records that we would actually get them, because there's no way to check. I just think this would solve a lot of problems, and it would make it a little more open to the public rather than private.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't have an issue with getting a, an inexpensive laptop for city use. There are many, many circumstances when our staff could use it as well. We do have one laptop that Bill uses for all his sewer reporting activities, but like I said, he uses it constantly for, for all the, the reporting he has to do. So getting, getting another wouldn't, wouldn't be that, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, I don't think it would be that expensive either. I've heard Lenovo's are pretty reasonable, and they're very efficient. I've never heard anybody, I've heard praises about them, and I know they're not that expensive. And I don't think a little cellphone would be that expensive, a monthly fee for that. It would just make everything more out in the open, and I think, you know, everybody should be able to use those, including Scott, for the meetings and everything. So, yeah, anyway, I would like to see us do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, personally, I'm not sure about the cellphone. I'm not, I'm not opposed to have, to having one, but I know I wouldn't carry it around with me on a daily basis, and it, it's pretty rare that I need to get ahold of the attorney, and, you know, once every two or three weeks to, to have a phone on me while I'm not at home to use to contact the attorney would be, it, it just seems like a hassle and an unneeded expense. I can say that on my phone, all of the phone calls and voicemails and everything go to the, the city email address that I use. It's all part of like a Google system, and so it's all part of my email, and so if anyone would, wanted to do a public records request for that, they would see all of that. Even the text messages go to my email, so it's all available.
Oh, okay.
So I did that when I got involved, just so that it would make it easier, and if anyone wanted to see it, I could just hand over my password and say, knock yourself out, good luck finding something in my email, because it's a mess, but, but it's all there.
No, okay. I wanted to keep any business separated from personal.
I know, and that's what I've done on, on my phone, is that it all goes to my, the city email address. And I also, I also make sure that any emails that I send, I copy City Hall on them all, and so it's all, it's all in City Hall, too.
Well, that's good to know. That's good for the public to know also. Okay, thank you, but I really would like to see that laptop.
Yeah, if the council would want to make a motion to approve maybe up to $400, you should be able to get a, a laptop for that much, I would imagine.
Yeah.
If that's something the council is interested in doing.
I agree. I think that, that would be a, a good thing, especially like what she was mentioning for Scott, or even for, I, I see where she, she, where that is very, could become a problem, you know, someone wants to look at something like, if I had a laptop, I'd be like, ah, you can get it in my laptop. You know? You have people's personal information in there, so, yeah, I, I agree. I think that that would be a good idea for, for the city. So I'm with Donna on this one. Donna, I think we should do this, so I make a motion that we...
Thank you.
...approve the purchase of a laptop for city business, up to $400.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the purchase of a laptop of up to $400 for city use. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donna Rogers. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. The last item of city business, item number five, council to consider changing the regularly, the regular city council meeting time. We've had several people, including council members, express interest in changing the time again, so here's your opportunity to let the discussion begin.
This is Jason. I'm, I'm finding it just very, very difficult to make it on these Friday mornings, increasingly difficult with the load that I've taken on down the, down the businesses. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can go back to an evening spot again. I'm, I'm liking the load we had, the Thursday at six kind of thing.
I don't have any problem changing it, as long as it's not on Friday.
Okay. We have a Thursday.
I agree.
Does that, I'm sorry. Donna, was that you?
Yeah, I agree with Jason. I, I absolutely think this should go back to six o'clock in the evening. And for me personally, I, I don't have a problem with what day it is, so.
Samantha, we haven't heard from you yet.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'm fine with whatever council prefers. I'm kind of open, being a mom, so whatever works for everyone else, I'm okay with.
All right. Anybody? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, are we sticking with our, just our old time, six o'clock on Thursday?
Why did we change it?
What's that?
Why, why did we change it?
Why did we change it? There were other things happening on Thursday nights. I know there was the Vader...
Are we okay now?
The Casa Rock, well, the Casa Rock was having their, their school, their school meetings on Thursday nights, and there were some people that wanted to go to that, that they couldn't, there was conflicting...
Is this going to cause a problem down the road?
It's going to cause a problem down the road.
For anyone?
Well, I, I do have commitments on Thursday nights that I would have to work around, but...
When, Wednesday, yeah.
I'm pretty, my schedule's pretty tight, so I'll just have to kind of...
Is it any day better than others?
Well, you said not Fridays, so. So Thursdays it is.
Thursday, but Saturday.
Would it be better later, 6:30, what Sam said?
Personally, I prefer earlier.
Oh, earlier?
But I know, the, the whole idea with doing it at 7:30 in the morning, as opposed to, say, 10:00 a.m., like what the, like what the county commissioners do, it gives folks that go to work the opportunity to come to the meeting if they, if they so chose to, before they went to work. And then six o'clock in the evening kind of does the same thing, where, you know, sure, we could do it at four or five in the, in the afternoon, but if folks are at work, then it's, it's difficult. And I know everyone's work schedules are different, and so just because six o'clock is kind of the more normal, accepted time, people are in the nine-to-five type jobs. I don't know how many people actually have that anymore, but that was the idea.
That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome.
That'd be awesome, a nine-to-five... That'd be awesome, a nine to five job, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we do have a comment from Ms. Costello.
Speaking from the public side, I want to go back to Thursday at six.
All right, we have a public comment Thursday at six. All right.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we change our meeting time from Friday at seven thirty in the morning to Thursday at six PM.
A motion by Mr. Daly to, um, change their seat, regular city, city council meeting to Thursdays at six PM. I'm assuming this is still, um, second and fourth, just like before, okay. Do we have a second?
Second and win.
Um, there are some rules we'll have to, it's by ordinance, so we'll have to prepare our ordinance. And then there's a certain amount of time we have to wait after the the ordinance is approved, um, before we can actually start meeting on that time, so it's probably gonna be-
Next meeting is still on the fourteen?
Yes, it'll still probably, it'll probably still be a couple of meetings before we can make that happen, just by- just by laws and stuff, so. Um, so we had a first, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
I'll second that, Joe.
Seconded by Miss Lovely. All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of changing the Vader city council meetings to second and fourth Thursdays at six PM, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the crowd roars.
All right, public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment? Once again, I see Ms. Costello has something to say.
Here comes the crowd.
Pardon?
Here comes the crowd.
Oh, yeah, here comes the crowd. Um, August first and second is our citywide yard sale. I have over twenty-four people signed up. Please remember to encourage everyone to wear masks, social distance, and if the sheriff is listening, which I think he's out in the parking lot, um, I'm interested to see how my homeless man is doing on the corner of A and B Street. And let's see what else. Um, I'm happy that we changed the hours back. Thank you very much.
You have two homeless guys? They're on two different corners?
All right, any other public comment? Hearing none, elected official comment.
I just wanted everybody to know we are back to phase two. I think everybody, I don't know if everybody knows yet, but we're back to phase two. Uh, yeah, encourage mask wearing. I know people hate it. We're getting as much as things thrown at at the clerks at the store, people very mad, whatever, whatever, we're just trying to keep our community safe and keep us safe, and really all it would take for, to be one person to get it, and you wouldn't have a store in Vader for fourteen days. You know, so we're trying to be as adamantly protected as possible, so.
Are you back to drive up or is-
No, we're fifty percent. Um, you can come in, it's just another table. Um, up to five people, but they have to all be from the same household to sit together. Yeah, let's just get through this.
Is this phase, phase two or modified phase three?
From what I've been told, we went right back to phase two. And I think it's a modified phase two. Might be a modified phase three, but because phase two, they used to be up to five people at a table and it didn't matter if they knew each other or lived together or what.
And a group of fifty could gather.
Yeah, so.
Because in phase two, we were limited to gatherings of five people. I think phase three, it was fifty, but I think the modification they did statewide was ten people. So it's like a modified-
Well, I've heard it's a modified phase three. We're not quite getting back to phase two yet, but I could be wrong. That's just the latest stuff that I've heard.
So, yeah.
It is what it is, I suppose.
It is what it is.
Call it whatever you want, but, okay. Um, any other elected official comments? I think, Donna, you were gonna say something?
Uh, I was. I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, MRSC, rather than the city attorney, is available. Uh, it has a whole planning department. It has several departments, and they can answer any legal questions that you have or any other questions, so please use them. They're very informative, very educational. Well, and I wanted to ask about the city maintenance too. Is there a plan yet to start, uh, doing some maintenance on the buildings? Painting, checking roofs and things like that. I know the, uh, park board mentioned doing something with the roof down at the pavilion, and that is something that's probably immediate, but, um, I just think we really need to get some maintenance done on our city buildings.
Yeah, the park board was talking about their, their facilities. Um, and I was talking with, um, Diane yesterday about, um, the other buildings. John's looking at, uh, at the city warehouse as well. Um, one other update, um, the A Street, um, over by the church where the, um, collapsed stormwater drain is right under the sidewalk, um, we have gotten an update from the county this week that we can use STP funds for, uh, maintenance on our stormwater system as well as our streets. Um, and so we do have the funds necessary to, uh, repair that, um, street and then some. So, um, I'm hoping that, um, at the next council meeting, we'll have something for council to look at and perhaps approve, um, as far as, uh, the fix for that, to prevent the backing up into people's properties and the parking lot.
Good.
So there is, there is some action.
Well, I have one more question then, uh, or comment. I would like to know what the status is on, uh, German Auto and the Smiths property? Whatever happened with those?
Um, German Auto, they're still, um, I don't know how to, he he's still interested in making some modifications to his, um, site plan and, um, the ecology limitations as far as the Oloqua Creek are in in his way, so I'm not exactly sure how much else to to say about that. Um, and then, um, the other one was, say, what was the second part?
The Smiths.
Oh, the Smith variant?
On that.
Um, there's been no action taken on that.
Is there going to be, or, I mean, what?
Well, they, they, um, do not have a building permit for that building yet because they were out of compliance.
Well, so was, um, German Auto.
Right.
Just about this deal, some of the same problems, so.
Yeah, that's cool.
I'm, uh, curious what's gonna, I mean-
I think I'd be more comfortable talking to you- I think I'd be more comfortable talking to you in 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 person about this issue, these issues.
Okay.
As they, you know, relate to, um, private properties.
Well, it's all public information though, Joe.
It is. I'd like to re, do what what I can to respect people's privacy.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other elected official comments? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh nine AM. Thank you, everybody.